The meeting of the City of East Cleveland's Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. I will call the roll. Is it Eric?
Yes.
Sidenberg, right?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Caver?
Here.
Ms. Thomas. Here. Sharon Hammerhand, here. We do have a quorum. We're gonna have to pass, or bypass, I should say, the approval of the prior meeting's minutes because we don't have a quorum until that. Or you said this before.
No, you have a quorum.
You can approve it even Eric being the he. He was not.
Yes, if you have sayings because he can't verify the minutes, that's fine. In effect, he would be going along with the boat of the majority of the remaining.
Of the rest.
So that's fine, as long as you have a quorum present.
Okay. All right. This in your packet is the minutes from November 5th. I'd take any additions or any sort of amendments. And at appropriate time, I would look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Thomas moves. Dr. Caver seconds. I will call the roll. Mr. Sidenberg?
Here.
Epstein?
Oh.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Epstein, yes.
Dr. Caver?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Sharon Hammerhand?
Yes.
Okay. The Board of the Financial Supervisor.
Hello.
Hello.
Before you, you will see our normal financial packet, the one with the binder clip. This one, yeah. The city is currently reconciled through September. The city is done with October. We have trained a couple people in the finance department where we started with one, and that didn't work out quite so good. So we went on to our second choice, and he's working out really good. And so October is reconciled, and he assures me that November's just about done. They took a different approach with November, and they're just about done. So I am truly hoping that at the next meeting, we will be reconciled through the latest month.
Great.
So you were saying we reconcile through October and November?
We're reconciled through October, and November is supposed to be done tomorrow.
We just don't have it today.
Correct.
But it's done since the packet was printed.
Correct. The packet is as of September. If you turn to page two, you can see we're currently monitoring 15 funds with a total deficit of $3.3 million. On page six, this is the revenue, year-to-date revenues compared to the existing estimated resources. And as of the end of September, it should be approximately 75 percent. And most of the amounts listed there are portion grant funds. Page seven is the expenditure side of the equation, and again, it should be approximately 75 percent. Most of the reason for most of the overage is due to salaries and benefits. I would say that's how.
That's it to me from the window.
I know. During the prior meeting, a question was raised regarding CDVG and the home grants. I think you are one of them. I don't think you're the only one. Let me get back to my page seven, because I think they're still on this list of cases. For CDVG, the Community Development Office, Finance Office, and Human Resources Director are working together to ensure that all payroll and healthcare costs are being reimbursed from the grant.
You said being reimbursed.
Right. The city already obviously expended the money, and so now returning those expenditures into the program for them to then give us the grant dollars, to draw down the grant dollars.
I would be surprised if that was an allowable cost.
It, percentages are. We have done it historically. And normally, the city was getting the drawdowns within a month or two of the payrolls. But with the switch in the payroll and in the HR director, it kind of fell off a little bit while they were both learning their new positions. But now, they have worked together with the Community Development Care and Hood in the office, and they're coming up with the cost to then submit to CDVG to get the grant monies to reimburse the city.
As we are, and I'm hoping I'm in the same territorial area, and we are talking about doing home dollars, there is no home dollars. That's what I'm saying. There is none there. So what are we doing? We're taking the grant money from the CDVG and doing?
No, the CDVG is in the Fund 2260.
Okay.
That's the first part. And then to segue in charge of the home program, which is Fund 2289, where I have a $51,000 expenditure and no revenue coming in. For the home fund, I spoke with Jack this morning, and there are, as part of that $51,000, there are two small healthcare claims. And Jack tells me that they are going to be able to apply to the home program because there are supposedly some grant monies there that they can draw down to reimburse the city for those healthcare claims. The biggest piece of that $51,000 is $45,000 that they did for a house renovation under the program. The city will not see that money until that house is sold. Once the house is sold, then the city recoups their cost. I mean, there, I have seen in other cities where, you know, you get the grant, you renovate the house, you sell it, then you put the money back in, you renovate another house, you sell it. I mean, I have seen cities do that too. And I'm assuming that's what the answer is.
And too, I hate to be, and I don't mean to be arrogant, but I don't mean to be, I don't know what other word it is, but other cities aren't like this. There is no buying of houses. We had one house sitting up there forever. It was a renovation house. And the house, I went through the house, and I wouldn't have paid that much money. That's more than a hundred and something thousand dollars.
I have a feeling it's the same one.
It's the same house.
It's the same one.
I think that's the house the city has sought to get there.
It's been vandalized.
Well, then I'm not singing to the choir, I'm singing to everybody. This is a ridiculous situation that we're in. You'll have to respond to it.
Okay.
Just a kind of leapfrog into that, there were four separate pieces of the paper that I distributed after the agenda. There's, it's Victim Crime Act, it's got some of the stuff there. I am confused about the home grant because it seems to me, and that's why I was hoping to get more information about it, because it is such, it's very hard to track. It's very hard to track because in reading it online, first of all, the home program's got a 25 percent match. Not sure where that's coming from. Secondly, like, within two years of the grant awards, the contractors and everything's got to be lined up, and the spendout can take place four years thereafter. And when you spend out, then you get it back. But just looking at this, there's no way this is, they must have put each year's, the awards here, 2003, they got $514,000, 2004, $514,000, but they've not been able to draw down much of this. And it was, it must have, there's no home 2003, 2014, so I assume that any of that activity is going on in the same home 1999 fund. So I don't know how you track stuff like that. You have to go by the grain.
I believe it is. Jack has been talking to the director in charge of the program, and the director is assuring Jack that there is home program grant monies that are available to the city to draw down.
It may not be 1999, but there's some.
Correct. There's, and then they were awarded a home grant for fiscal, for 2016. I don't have that dollar amount, but that is what they're telling me. I'm just sharing what I know. And I know part of the estimated resources in 2015 is a $22,000 transfer from the general fund. So that makes up part of the 102,000 estimated resources, was a transfer from the general fund.
I keep saying, and I keep telling, coming up with this. We gotta go back to what's happening with the home. A lot of the funds went back, and we didn't get the funds, okay? And right now, I'm even talking to Director Johnson the other day, he wasn't aware that there weren't any home funds. He's relying on the home fund, the funds that's supposed to be coming, and has not arrived yet. So what, how do we deal with that, Tish?
I'll have to go back and talk to the director personally and find out exactly what's going on. If there are, I know the $22,000 transfer is from that Pottet. I'm sure you remember the letter, saying that the city expended funds they should not have. So the general fund had to reimburse that fund. So that was part of the $22,000 transfer. In relation to the house, I think the city, my understanding is the city has to sell that house in order to get their money back for the $45,000 that they spent. I'm also being told that there is supposedly grant monies for this year in '15, as well as grant monies in 2016. I will go back and talk to the director personally and see if I can get whatever documentation that the Community Development Office has, and get more familiar with the program and how it exactly works. Because I'm going based on what I'm hearing, but I'm not.
Well, and it's really very difficult because if there's different grant awards in different years, and then, and this program, you've got, maybe the contracts have to be in place by a certain, within two years, where you've got that spendout that can occur over the next four. So add a maximum, I'm thinking, within six years. So we go back to 2000, this is 2015, my success, 2009. So there might be funds coming in from previous, you know?
And I don't know, I would have to go and look at his documentation and try and work and make sure.
Well, you know, I really don't understand, and with all due respect to both you, Madam Chair, and you, Tish, and Nita, I find this very, it's crazy. That's the only thing that I could say for it. Because I'm sitting up here, and I was, I was with the director the other day, myself, yes, Jack.
Director Johnson.
And Council Vice President Wheeler. And we looked and we called to find out, and there were no home funds. They are supposed to be coming, but they are not there. They're not there now. And Director Johnson just found that out. So I'm surprised that you aren't aware that, of that.
We're talking the same language, different dialects.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so as long as you understand how I feel.
Because there's not the cash in there. Jack was under the impression the cash was there. And the Community Development people are saying, well, there's an award still there. So it's the difference between drawing down the award to put the cash in the fund, and the whole, that's why it takes Community Development and Director Johnson to piece that together, because it's, they're the appropriation side. And if I remember correctly, and this goes way back to the previous finance director, the accounting system doesn't tell you if it's got cash or not, it just allows you to make expenditures. Is that right? No, it's, same is a good thing, but I'm just saying that's what we got. I understand.
You got what you got, and you got what you always get if you keep going in the circle, you're gonna get the same identical thing. Nothing. Absolutely. And this is ridiculous because I think we need to know if this house can sit in there for a while. I thought it was gone.
No, when I spoke with Jack this morning, I believe the house is still for sale.
Yeah.
And the money's, the money to the city is pending the sale of that house. The next thing I have is the normal accounts payable report.
And that's all I have.
It's the next legal with the state bill. And you can see as of December 3rd, the city has $2.8 million in outstanding payables. So that's all I have for like the normal information. I also have, we have presented to council, and it's on their agenda for their meeting tomorrow. There's a 2015 revised appropriations. And we have also submitted the 2016 temporary appropriations for council to consider. 2015, it does include several transfers out from the general fund. You'll see that on page two. And as the city put in their recovery plan, they're looking to all of the deficit funds into the general fund, and that's what all those transfers do. So far, the city has made all of its payrolls in '15 and has been current with pension. And that's pretty much all I have for today.
So you said, the last part?
Has made all of its payrolls and is current with its pension.
We, I hate to bring this up again, but maybe you might, I don't know. I don't know.
She knows me.
Jack received some small pharmacy claims. Not last week he was, Jack was out of the office, but the week before, there were two small medical claims that came into the city, and they got paid that same week that they came in. Jack will be back in the office tomorrow. If any additional claims have come in since then, then I know Jack is determined to make all claim payments when they come in.
Madam Chair. And I also was sitting up there with the, in the same meeting that we had with Director Johnson and Vice President Thomas Wheeler. And while I was sitting in there, apparently, there was damage to the new truck. So we have.
The new salt truck.
Yeah, the new salt truck. And we have a claim.
He hasn't even served it yet.
Well, yeah, but this is his plea. And there, there's a claim, I think of $20,000.
$2,000 or something of that nature. A medical claim or a car?
Of the damage to the.
Vehicle.
Vehicle.
Jack did let me know that there was, the salt truck did, there was a damage to the salt truck. But I don't believe there, I have some money in the 2015 appropriations, so if that bill comes in, Jack would have the appropriations to pay it. But I don't know when that bill will be.
Do you know when that, not this year, right? Then it happened at the end of last?
I don't know, they just got to be, I don't know. But also, I'm looking to see, because when, it was asked in the last, I think, meeting, both meetings here and in the council meeting, was there any salt? Well, there is salt, but how much salt is it, and how much money has been designated for salt?
In the 2015 appropriations, there has been money set aside to pay for salt. My understanding is the city and the consortium are somehow going back and forth. Maybe the mayor would know more about that. And in 2016, there will be appropriations to cover the purchase of salt.
Because that's the biggest, one of the biggest concerns of my residents.
Well, I'm hoping winter continues as it is. So.
I mean, it's got no salt in my city. It's really God sent, but you know, I always have, I'm being a big plan, I'm looking for the deep plan, you know, as backup. Who got my back? I don't know. So we try, I always try to wonder when the, when the thing, when everything hits the fan, are we prepared for that fan out port? And most of the time, we're looking at the hills, saying, don't go up the hill because there's no salt. So if we got money designated for that, I am happy about that. And, but you know, my question is always relative, coming from my residents. And my residents rules by destination up here on council.
Do you have any questions?
Tish?
Yes.
The 2015 permanent appropriation document is an amended appropriation?
Correct.
What is the, or what was the original appropriation for the general fund?
On page four, it's $11 million, oh ninety-two. It's the very first sign on page four.
Got you. So the 11, oh ninety-two is the original appropriation. And our amended appropriation is 14 million?
Is 12 million, or is it?
12 million, sorry.
And that's due to all the transfers going out of the general fund? That was not in the original appropriation resolution.
Okay. And right now, your revenue estimate is what?
We have just submitted to the county for a new amended certificate. And for the general fund, the new amended certificate comes in at just over 12 million. And we know that in trying to move the deficits, we know we're exceeding the certificate, but we want to move all of the deficits into the general fund, so we see the problem, like what the problem is all in one place.
Okay. And we're on pace to make the 12, with the information that we have through to date, we're on pace to make the 12 million by end of year?
I think we will stay well under the 12 million.
Is that with?
In revenues.
Oh, in revenues. Yes, I'm sorry. I thought you meant appropriations. I'm sorry, yes. Yes, we are on pace to make the 12 million.
Okay, thanks. So that, all of that is contributed to the transfer of the funds and all of that?
For the appropriations, it's mainly due to the transfer out of the fund. The increase in estimated revenues is due to refuse came in better than originally anticipated. Income tax came in better than originally anticipated within the last, because this is as of September.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, within the last couple of months, refuse and income tax have come in better than expected. Also, when the original certificate was done, traffic cameras were estimated only through March, which is when the law went into effect. The city has continued the camera program, so that additional revenue has also is part of the increase from the original 11.4 million to the 12 million.
And the expenditures, I'll call them the real expenditures, not the transfers, are on pace to be lower than their appropriation throughout the whole general fund, maybe not by department, but through the whole general fund's appropriation.
Correct. When you back out the transfers out, the appropriations, the actual expenditures are coming a little bit lower because the city has lost several employees that they have not replaced, and we've made their severance payments. And so without the transfer, and with monitoring the cash in the bank account, we're actually not spending the money, so actual expenditures are coming within.
Fibrillation appropriation. Thank you.
I hate to ask this question because it's this, I don't know if it's inconsistent or consistent with what's happening. We are not supposed to be collecting the money from the tickets. Now, this is my Plan B, backup, just hypothetical, and I don't like to use that word because sometimes it doesn't work and sometimes it did. Hypothetically, what if it goes that Congress or Supreme Court rules in not in favor of the city, and we have to pay back all this money that is collected? And this is my Plan D. Has anybody watched out for that, auditors? Anita, Tish?
In the 2016 estimated resources, there is no camera money being estimated, because I don't know what's going to happen with the program. I don't know if Nita knows more about it. It's been a concern of mine, too. A bigger concern of mine.
Okay, and I think that if it goes the wrong way, it would devastate the city. So it's something that has to be monitored and given. I don't, I don't know how, what are the decisions, and what are the updates coming from these three quarterly or whatever.
My understanding is the law currently states that the city has to report to the Auditor of State's Office the dollar amount of the tickets billed each quarter. I'm still working on trying to get that from ATS in order to send. Then there's the rumor that the city's local government would be reduced by that amount. Now, I received information from the city. Now, I received information from the city's law director saying that legally, the state could not touch their local government. I haven't looked any further into that nor how it relates to what Ohio revised code says. But if it is dollar for dollar for what's being billed, the city's collection rate is not what's being billed. So the city would be like a minus.
Okay, so you all have heard of all my B claims? My B concern?
Yes, so we bill a hundred, the city's collecting about thirty or forty.
And it's based on, it's, the code says still because of the way the laws. My understanding of the whole legal area is that, that there is prevalent thought process that would say that this is an infringement of home rule. And that's where the legal battle is. I don't know, it seems to me, I think Dayton has tried to fight it.
Wasn't it two cities that took it to the Supreme Court?
I think it's, I think it's been.
Oh.
Oh, so it hasn't even gone to appeals, okay.
Yeah, and we, the city, at least, we, with the law, our law director said we weren't part of that involvement. I'm not correct. I am correct, as usual. I'm sorry, I just said some more intensely. And I report more intensely. Thank you, Madam Chair, for indulging me.
Sure. Any other questions for the Angel Supervisors?